I'd like to call the Grand County Board of Education. Special call meeting to order, June 30th, 2020. Mr. Carrington, would you lead us in prayer, please?
My caller, we thank you for this day and that we gathered here today and just pray your hand on this meeting and that we would say and do those things that honor and place you and we just space it up our country up too, following these trying times old, we need physical healing and spiritual healing, so we just ask your hand upon all of our leaders, counties, all the way up to the president and just, Lord, just to bless our country and just calm the fears and the anxieties that are going around and just help us believe what should have us today, we please you and everything we're saying that it is.
How will you pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the June 6th, 2020 regular meeting? Do I hear a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for today? Do I hear a second? All in favor? Any opposed? This night, do we have any individuals or groups to address the board today? The floor is now open for public comment period.
We have three, sir.
All right.
One at a time.
Yes.
And Carla, will you, how do you do that?
Now, Mr. Moody, just for clarification, are the other two going to speak on the same topic?
Yes.
Okay, we have a limit by law of 15 minutes.
Okay, that's fine.
If there's three, you have to limit yours to around five minutes, okay?
That's fine.
All right.
For those who don't know, I'm Carla Matheson and I'm a senior from the class of 2020. I want y'all to take a minute to think back to your time in grade schools, think about your favorite collections, your first day at Kinder Gordon, and your time in elementary school. Do you remember how excited you were at the sort of middle school and how nervous you were when you were in your freshman year? How far were you in your junior year? Do you remember your last football or basketball game? I bet some of you might even still have a picture from your senior prom. You all are lucky. You have those last memories from your time in high school. My classmates and I were completely droll through the last three months of high school, which is supposed to be the most fun. Thinking back over the past four years, our class has accomplished so much. Our football team won a state championship this year and they were unable to have a ring ceremony to celebrate. The same goes for Nathan Fisher, who won state in his wrestling play class. Our seniors this year have received a substantial amount of scholarship money. In fact, our top three ranking seniors all have four rods. Our volleyball team won conference for the first time in 37 years this year, and I'm sure our softball team was on their way to another title, but they were off to their season. All of these are things to celebrate. We did not get to have our last field day, senior prom, or athletic banquet. Our parents did not even get to come celebrate with us at our afternoon banquet. This year's seniors did not even know that their last day of school would be March 13th. Now we're having to advocate for the ceremony that we absolutely deserve. Can you imagine? If your hearts aren't broken for the class of 2020, then you're sitting in the wrong seats. What if your class was, what if your child was part of the class of 2020? What do you want them to be celebrated? What do you want all of your family and friends to be there and see them all across the stage? Please try to put yourselves in our shoes and our parents' shoes. Furthermore, if you wanted to give a graduation, why don't do it months ago? Why don't you get our hopes up and tell us about our speeches and give us the date so we could send out our invitations? Lastly, I'll have to take a minute to talk about the whole social distancing thing. I'm sure that you all know the students of Grand County School are no longer staying at home, and you can easily tell that if you drop past English parking lot past seven o'clock. I'm sure you know that people in our community are gathering. We've probably seen Facebook posts of getting together if many of our churches are back to normal. People are going on vacations, and I'm sure some of you have plans to travel. Can you all honestly say that you're still hard on the walk down or to pick them up again? Have you not been to a practice or a tournament? Have you been outside the county on a weekend trip? So all in all, what's the difference? Because I don't really think there is one. We all took the graduation that we earned. We want to be celebrated like you were when you were a senior. It's only fair. I'm in contact with students across the state, and their schools are having in-person graduations while practicing social distancing. If you truly care and support the students at RHS, please use to give us an in-person graduation with your own. Thank you guys.
Thank you, Carla.
Good job, Carla.
Send the next to me, Mr. Moody.
What's up, guys?
Hey, hello.
Hi, my name is Paul Lovin, and I was the student body president of the senior class at Roswell High School, and I'm here today to speak in favor of having graduations for my fellow classmates and I. Due to the activity here, we were not able to have our awards ceremonies, field day, or our all the prom. And we're demanding that we play it safe. Even though we've been robbed of our senior year and our activities, we're still stronger individuals and we will stick together to fight for any way possible to have graduation. If you look around town, you can see many people gathering in English parking lot. If you look on Facebook, you can see people going on vacations, you can see them playing travel ball. How can we let all this activity go on and not allow 96 students to have a graduation? We've worked our butts off for four years to get to pass classes, to obtain a degree, and we've all looked forward to the moment that we get to walk across the state in front of our friends and family. Taking away graduation from us would destroy our hearts and our spirit, and we have worked too hard to be denied a graduation ceremony, and all of my classmates will agree with it. We're willing to do anything to keep graduation in the schedule and to have our friends and family or broadcast on Facebook to make it up in the air, but. I know that it is not our choice, but I'm asking on behalf of the students and the parents of the students for you to allow us to have this moment and this opportunity. This is a once in a lifetime chance that we won't get to experience ever again if we don't get to do this schedule and it just gets canceled. So please consider the students and think of what this will do to us as a whole, and thank you for your time for letting me sit.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Look at it.
Thank you.
Don't care. Last one you give is a good one. Now, two calls.
So I'd like to speak to you this morning just for a second. As a parent of a senior at Roswell High School, and I'd just like to start out by sharing some dates with you. April the 25th, May the 14th, May the 19th, May the 21st, May the 27th, May the 29th, July the 18th. So only one of those dates remains. The other dates that I shared with you are dates that Roswell High School had set aside to recognize and celebrate our senior class. As a parent of a valedictorian with senior class, I've seen the heartache and shared with her the heartache on those other dates that I mentioned. You know, I had to listen to my daughter say, well, today was prom day, or today was graduation day. And that's been very hard on this entire senior class. So I just asked the board to please consider giving these kids closure to this school year and letting them celebrate with their friends and their family and a regular graduation ceremony at Roswell High School to head of stadium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matheson.
Would you care, I mean, I think you put a lot of power into some of your statements and options.
I have, and I'll be happy to share some things right now. I will tell you that yesterday, myself, I guess I'm the principal today, so yesterday myself and the principal, Ms. Erica Sawyer, went down to big up the stadium. We measured the stadium. We know that the board chooses to allow each senior to grant, you know, four guests, that we can set 81 families on the home side and 30 families on the visitor's side and have the social distancing. I have spoken with my faculty, and they are willing to work the stands and the gates, and I feel like, you know, we can ask people, please wear our masks if they enter the stadium. We can take pictures if people come in. I can have faculty members around the stadium to make sure that people are setting six feet apart, or we can mark the stadium. We'll tape it off as we need to, show people where it is set as they come in. We can, we'll issue tickets to each senior, depending on what the board decides, you know, how many people they could have attendance. We'll issue parking pads, and I'll have faculty members that will work all those areas. And then the only faculty members that would actually be on the field with the seniors would be the school board, myself, Ms. Sawyer, and the senior sponsors, and the rest of the faculty would work, actually work the, the venue. So I really feel like it's something that we can do. We will six feet apart with all the senior chairs, rather than having two marching lines coming in through the stadium like we normally do where kids go down the field side by side. So we have one line that enters the stadium, all kids six feet apart, you know, down the visitor's side, and down the back, and then down the home side, and everyone will enter that way. Prevents the kids from being too close at any point in time.
You can have the visitors just come in from different exits.
We will have different gates open. We can sign where they enter based on their parking pass.
I want you to know, David, you're preaching to the choir, okay? Because I am totally for you having, the kids having, because I miss softball since.
Oh, wow.
And I, and that, you know, that told me. The governor has given a lock that no more than how many people can be in a certain area. You know, I don't want to break the lock.
Well, I do know that, I know it says no more than 25 without people gathering, I think so, but I feel like there needs to be some research done into that, because I know our public pool is allowing more than 25. I think that it's based on square footage. That's an indication our stadium would definitely hold 500 people with social distancing.
And I have a copy of the Zima County Public Schools graduation exercise for you to look at, how they, because they have recently.
They did last week, they graduated all our schools, anyway, they, with fans, you know, or with parents in the stadium, and I think a total of about 3500 kids graduated throughout the week, and they were on different days, you know, one of them wore it and one of them had, 30 or 40 in schools, I think, so. If they did do this last week, so.
Well, we will discuss this in closed session and get legal advice from Ms. Davis, and we will come back and let you all know exactly how, what we can do.
My understanding situation is put the board in and this.
It's a nightmare. I'm telling you, this whole situation has been a nightmare for everybody.
It's been very difficult for teachers, administrators, and I know the stress that this night has had to deal with, so.
I have one question. Because this is a boss made by SROs. Because I've been in one deal. You got one person, take people come in that does not want to comply. That's where I sit. You gonna let me arrest them? Because what are you gonna do? You gonna let them come in? What if somebody brings in one more person, then allow? What if somebody refuses to wear a mask? That's something I need clarity on too. If we have this, if we have, what are we gonna do with my parameters from my SROs dealing with the issue with the sheriff's office? That's something to be thought about. What am I gonna be allowed to do if somebody does not want? And there's gonna be one, and if we let one do it, you know, what kind of firestorm is it gonna be? And I'm all for this too, like I said. I'm not anti-graduation, but if we do this, there needs to be parameters set on what I'm allowed to do with my SROs, because there's gonna be rules, and it's up to me to enforce those rules, okay? If somebody doesn't do it, that means that I'm gonna have the power to put somebody cut us.
We understand.
But I mean, I just want to know, because I'm thinking about the race, and I think you get asked in the way you're part.
Well, if they don't, but again, if they don't, because I don't want to watch their group graduate, again, what am I gonna be allowed to do with my SROs?
I don't know what the situation is with the sheriff's office. I know there's some things going on, but last week I did speak with the sheriff, and I, at that time, he told me, every how many deputies we needed to be, have to send his whole force, that they need to do to help us, you know, maintain whatever rules we have. You know, I don't deal with that kind. I don't really even want to arrest him.
He shouldn't.
But, you know, if you don't have a ticket.
He should.
If you don't have a ticket, and then it's just like a football game, if you don't have a ticket, y'all come to the gate. So we would just need deputies at those areas to, that way we know without a ticket, you can't enter, and we'll have to ask you leave. And if you require, require a mask during the event, then, you know, people, you do that, and I would be, you know, I think you ask them to leave, but I don't want to, it will be for these kids too, that will provide whatever else we need in the stadium.
I've had a question asked by two grandparents. Can we stand outside the gate, you know, like a lot of people do at football games, and, and watch? And I told him, I don't know.
That's what I'm saying, is there needs to be parameters set, and I think there needs to be.
One issue we're gonna run into is the school is not owned property between the sites of building and the fence right there. That's privately community college property, which is why at football games, people go to that area to smoke. They leave the school grounds and go over there and smoke, which is probably illegal there to smoke food, but there's no one to enforce it. So, I mean, firstly, that's not school property. If they choose to stand out there, I don't think that's the school's problem to enforce that, obviously how we can.
Yeah, okay.
I think we can definitely block it off to keep people from coming there and trying to park, and we can block off the upper section, you know, this up here to keep people coming up here to park also, which I think we probably should.
Well, if it's not ours, we can't block it.
Do what?
So let's try to get permission, we can't block off something that's not ours.
I mean, I can work on that.
Yeah, I mean, we need to get permission from Liam, which they didn't thank us through, I mean.
All right, thank you, David.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matheson, would you have anything to your handbook?
The only thing, the only thing in the handbook that has changed is on page five, which is immunization, that's new, it changes every year. And then page 16, we have defined what a crop pop is in the dress code. The problem we're having trouble is kids are wearing dress code, I think, in high school and middle school by wearing crop pops, and we made that change. And then the spring schedule in the back of the handbook on page 37, that's on the hand book. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to close, favor the panel? Do I hear a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, reports and discussion items. Mr. Green. Can you tell Mr. Green to come in, Susan, please?
Okay, in your package of documents I gave you there, first two set of documents are budget amendments. First section, there are three pages, and these are budget amendments that need to be done before year end. There's not a year end budget amendment. A packet with nine pages, those are year end budget amendments, but I'll go over the budget amendments where there's three attached together. First section there is the State Public School Fund, budget amendments for the State Public School Fund. First section is PRC 15 School Technology Fund. There was an increase in revenue of $215, I think used after supplies and materials. The next section now is part of the Coronavirus Relief Fund. We received $49,150. I made this budget amendment before there was any guidance for this source of funds, and the way I budgeted that was supplies and materials, $2,150. Capitalized equipment, $7,500. Non-capitalized computers, $7,500. Sales tax, $1,000. And then equipment, that could be capitalized, $13,000. After we got the guidance for this part of funding, we used the majority of these funds for salary benefits for child nutrition department. Any questions about those two amendments? Okay, on the next page, I have a budget amendment here for the Capital Outlay Fund. This budget amendment is for $83,575, and this budget amendment reflects the purchase installment for busting recently received, yellow bust. On the next page, this is a budget amendment to fund eight, which is where we account for all our grants. This is for PRC 311, GEAR Up. For this budget amendment, I should have made this budget amendment back in the fall. If you look at the bottom of the budget amendment there, in the description of code, the last line there is revenue for GEAR Up. You'll see that that's a debit of approximately $67,000. What this budget amendment represents is the fact that last year's GEAR Up program, which had a budget of approximately $250,000, that $67,000 represents unspent funds for that, for that program. It's really difficult, the size of system we are, to spend $250 for GEAR Up program. $67,000, $250 was the approximate, $67 was unspent. And you know that that particular program overlaps a typical fiscal year, our fiscal year is July the 1st through June 30th, so we have to carry those funds over for July, August, and September. And once we get to September, then that's when I should have determined how much unspent funds we had and started with fresh budget on October 1st. This budget amendment accomplishes that.
But this $67,000 doesn't carry over to next fiscal year?
Unfortunately, GEAR Up.
Those funds are very restricted.
They are. Closed through our state, and they, years ago, had some difficulties with, with GEAR Up and how expenditure, revenues came on their end, and they're really strict on the GEAR Up program now for their sub-grantees. Any questions about the budget amendments? Okay, this next set of budget amendments are nine pages. These are the budget amendments I do each year to close out or finish up this school year. There's a point I like to make, and I, I say this a lot of times when I do present these budget amendments, I'm probably gonna say it three or four times today, but these budget amendments, majority of them are not meant to increase or decrease any actual expenditure or actual revenues. There's a general statute that states that we have to have no overages on our actual expenditures, over our budget expenditure based on purpose code. So we account all year, we account for our funds based on fund first, and then by PRC. PRC is a program of authority code that allows us to account for different pots of money in the state that our government accounts in, and grants as well. But this statute states that our actual expenditures cannot exceed our budget expenditure based on purpose code. So that's twice already, so it's probably gonna, probably gonna say that a couple times more. When I get into these budget amendments, first page, this is the State Public School Fund. First section there is PRC 009 longevity. The amount of revenue booked there, you'll see in the credit column, is $87,883.9. And that's the amount of longevity that we pay during the year of the State Public School Next section now, this is PRC 1/30, State Textbooks. An increase in revenue there of $26,000 to cover state textbooks for 9,000, which are textbooks that we get through the traditional warehouse. And then the other one there, other textbooks, are $17,000, read the items that can be textbooks or instructional supplies, that's not in the traditional warehouse, and you can include devices. Any questions about budget amendments on the table? Next page, this is a budget amendment to the State Public School Fund. If you'll stand out in the description of code all the way to the bottom, you'll see that there's no entry there for an increase or decrease in revenue. This budget amendment for the State Public School Fund achieves the goal of that general statute where our actual expenditures do not exceed our budget expenditures. And all this budget amendment does is realign our current budget for budget expenditure based on purpose code, so that we don't have any overage based on purpose code. Next page, any questions on it? This is a budget amendment to the local current expense fund. We'll look at the description, bottom of the description column. This is a budget amendment for the local wealth contribution that we receive from the county. Very grateful for that, they stepped up and helped us with a supplanted issue that we were unaware was going to come up until three years after, we're well aware that our timber receipts were reduced by 70% in 2017. So we're grateful they helped us out with that. But that amount is, again, is $86,734. Here is another budget amendment, our expense fund. This is a year end budget revision. If you look in the credit column there, the last entry, you'll see that there's an increase in revenue of $200,000. At this point, we have spent $1 million that the county has given to us during the year, but at this point, we're also gonna have accounts tables that'll be coming in after today. There are actually expenses incurred in this year 2020, so we have to make a budget amendment so that we can account for those tables that are coming in after June 30th, so that our actual expenditures don't exceed budget expenditure based on purpose code. Next page, this is a small budget amendment to the federal fund. We didn't have to make a lot of changes to the federal fund. This is for PRC 110. This is the 21st Century Afro School Grant. I'm simply reallocating budget expenditures there, reducing that by $3,500 to cover some cafeteria workers that we paid during the year for the smacks that we provided. Next page, this is a budget amendment for the Capital Outlay Fund. Again, this is no change in any actual expenditure or revenues, it's simply a budget amendment to realign budget expenditures so that the actual expenditure doesn't exceed the budget expenditure based on purpose code. Total of that budget is $35,000. Next page, I have a budget amendment here for the Child Nutrition Fund. Our child nutrition program did not exceed our budget of $1 million, but between March 16th and now, we're receiving two pots of money. The COVID, the COVID relief fund, there was an amount of $49,150, you already saw that one, there was another one for $52,000, $1,000. We, both funds were allocated to the State Public School Fund, and when the auditors do perform our audit, they will take those expenditures we made out of those two sources of funding and transfer those expenditures from the State Public School Fund over to the Child Nutrition Fund. So I've had to increase the Child Nutrition budget so that when those expenditures are transferred over, we don't, our expenditure don't exceed our budget expenditure based on purpose code. So that might be the 56 times I've said that today. And the increase in that budget amendment is 200 drops of all. Next page, these are budget amendments to fund eight. First section there is PRC 308. I mention this because there's another budget amendment on the next page for PRC 308, which is in fact eight. That's a very big budget. $800,000 with a wide range of budget codes. So I have, in that particular PRC or that grant, had to make a lot of budget amendments to the budgeted expenditures, so that we don't. budget amendments to the budgeted expenditures, so that we don't, you know, so that we don't see budget expenditure, actually don't see a budget expenditure. Next section down, this is a budget amendment for sales tax refund. We have to account for that each year. And you'll see there that in the credit column, um, there's seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and twelve cents, and then reallocated back to other departments within the school where those refunds were earned. The actual bud, the tax refund that we received was approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. Next page, this is Fund Eight, uh, as well where we account for grants. This is another budget amendment to, um, impact eight. Um, you'll see that there are a lot of entries there where budget expenditures are simply reallocated. Uh, there's no change in this, uh, in the actual expenditure or actual revenues. And the last budget amendment, um, is for PRC four forty-three, preschool fees. This is private pay. Um, we needed to increase our budget expenditures, uh, for, uh, expenditures that actually were greater than the revenues that we received for NC pre-k. You'll see that in the statement, but this, uh, this particular pot of money is private pay, so we're having to use some of those funds that, um, we have accumulated over the years to help with that program. This is the first time we've ever had to do it. And we know the salary benefits for those folks in that program increased, and we all get an increase, you know, for our allotment for each student, a monthly basis, you know, we're, we're at one now where we've had a personal program, but we're using private pay to help supplement the program. Any questions about budget amendments? Okay, your next packet, um, these are expenditure reports here today. We'll just flip to the second page, please. Again, when I, when I talk about this report, if you'll just scan the last three, uh, rows at the bottom, I'll talk about whether there are any variances during the year. At this time of year, uh, based on that general statute, we are not supposed to, uh, make any, uh, back-to-back variances or overages, uh, in the local current expense fund, based on the increase in that budget by two-hundred dollars, two-hundred thousand dollars to cover our accounts payable. Uh, we're under budget by fourteen percent. For Fund Eight, where we account for our grants, we're under budget by eleven percent, because that particular, um, fund does have grants to carry over. Uh, in the State Public School Fund, you'll see that we spent a hundred percent of the funds, actually a little bit less than that rounded up, um, we've spent a hundred percent of our, uh, State Public School Funds. Next is the federal fund, we're under budget by thirty-seven percent, and two grants within that particular federal fund that have a lot of carryover. Uh, the biggest one being Twenty-First Century After School Grant, that's a four-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. And as small as we are at this rate, we're first spending four-hundred thousand dollars on that after school grant. Uh, next is child nutrition. Uh, we're under budget by twenty-five percent, and that's based on that two-hundred-thousand-dollar increase I mentioned earlier to cover those COVID-nineteen expenses that will be transferred from the State Public School Fund to child nutrition. And capital outlay, we're under budget by thirty-two percent. And the total, uh, total expenditures, uh, for the year is fifteen million, three-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents.
You said that federal fund, uh, were carried over to the following year.
There are some federal funds that do carry over this, uh, upcoming year, yes. And then the last page in this packet are some of the grants expenditures, um, some of the grants that we have in Fund Eight, just to give you, uh, you know, the year date expenditures for some of these grants, uh, totals approximately five-hundred and So any questions about the budget amendments?
Okay, go ahead, the interim budget now.
Okay, um, since we have no planned allotments from the state we have had for years, um, there's no, um, no way that we can, uh, build a budget, budget by June thirty, so we have to, uh, we have to approve an interim budget for the upcoming year. Basically, I'm not gonna read this, but basically, this interim budget says that we will proceed in the upcoming year with the same level of expenditures, um, district-wide, uh, that we have in this, this year, this year, until we do receive, uh, foundations from the state.
Is that all you have for Mr. Green?
All I have, I have, I do have, just to make you aware, do have a, uh, distribution request for the need-based public school capital fund, uh, for the, uh, sixth grade wing. I, I forwarded that to, uh, Big Garland, and we're waiting on a signature from their chairperson. And once we, once we receive that, we'll forward that on to, uh, to Department of Construction, so they take three verses, and that's five thousand, um, five hundred and three dollars. And just want to, don't forget, I do have, uh, some insurance forms that need to be signed, and all of them, I think there's three of those, to continue to, uh, to continue in three of the types of insurance that we have to, you know, Carolina's school for
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Green? Thank you, Mr. Green, appreciate it.
Do you have to approve the budget amendments?
Do I hear a motion to approve the end of your budget amendments as presented today by Mr. Green? Do I hear a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Do I hear a motion, uh, for the fiscal year twenty-one, the interim budget, as presented by Mr. Green? Do I hear a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Green.
Start a new year.
Mr. Green, would you explain your position on, is that what he's gonna represent for the school? In the same change he had about the, uh, dress code, this is something that happened in middle school. So, uh, there would be some significant changes. I will tell you, there will be some inserts or building of the handbooks based on the, um, coronavirus practices, but we thought, like, we didn't have a front-end panel on what the changes would be at this point, to pretty being able to be published, uh, without a good publicity. So, uh, I'm assuming he doesn't have any significant changes. I was coming down, and we're having some changes, all of those pesticide charts will change, utilization changes across the system, so there was going to be a change in the handbooks. If you've got, um, if you have questions, I can put you on, until we can maybe get there. Do you want to discuss it? Well, yeah, I do approve. Rob asked, aren't you ready to answer any questions?
Does anyone have any questions on any of the three handbooks? Is the board prepared to approve the three handbooks, high school, middle school, and elementary? Do I hear a motion to approve the school handbooks, elementary, middle school, and high school handbooks for the school year two thousand and twenty, twenty-one? Do I hear a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Child nutrition bids, is Ms. Moody here? What'd he say?
He's moved to the board. He's saying his intercom system.
Our intercom system is Miss Moody.
And I will be checking this once, so we should have to be open to anyone else.
The search continues, I believe he's going that way.
I can't find her, I'd rather run to the bathroom, so.
Mr. Green, someone's gonna have to kind her, because we have to have her child nutrition bids, so we'll, you can go on and go.
Find you a theme, then.
I need to, can I begin this, like, say who's next?
She's next, she's the only one, I mean. Yeah, because Ms. Knight's gonna do the, you want us to go ahead and do the?
Yeah, that's your pleasure.
Can we skip the nutrition? All right, Ms. Knight, vehicle bids.
So, yeah, so we had a couple of old buses and a couple of old vehicles that we put out to the public, uh, for, for, uh, you told me you had other ones?
Do I have other ones?
Yes.
Well, I have, uh, no, Cosmotic Produce Quiz. So we had to go to, uh, US Foods for produce.
Do you, we have any farm in the east?
We have a hood system, but that doesn't get opened until today, so, other than that stuff.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have further child nutrition bids at this time.
Right.
So we don't vote? Do we need Chris?
So moving forward with vehicle bids, so we asked, uh, anyone who's interested to bring a still bid. I have one bid that I can open at this point. The bid is from Travis Hooper, it's for fifteen hundred dollars for the two-thousand Dodge truck. That's the old maintenance truck, I believe.
Yes.
Um, yeah, it's a, it's a two-thousand Dodge Ram, F two fifty truck, four by four, um, and the bid is fifteen hundred dollars. My recommendation would be to take the bid, it was my understanding that, that anything over, uh, a thousand dollars would be the appropriate bid.
Do I have a motion to accept the bid from Travis Hooper of fifteen hundred dollars for the Dodge Ram truck?
So good.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Just to clarify, um, how many vehicle bids we have? It is right here. We had, um, and it was posted on replacement, it posted in the, um, foyer room. Uh, it was a nine-to-eight-nine international bus, a nineteen-ninety Chevrolet bus, this two-thousand-dollar Ram, and a two-thousand-one Chevrolet in Calhoun. So there were four.
So the other three?
No one is with it.
No one is with it?
We, we did have some interest from the van for one of the buses from equipment, but so that might be out of the question.
All right, Ms. Knight, two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school calendar revision.
Yeah, so, um, a couple of weeks ago, you, I'm guessing the summary, uh, a couple of weeks ago, you approved the twenty twenty-one school calendar. Um, since then, we've had a mandate to revise the calendar to include five remote learning days, uh, per state statute at the time, although this, this has probably changed again, and they changed forever. Um, they could be used the first five days of school, um, but we have down a hundred more years to plan. So we have indicated those in pink, as we actively just sprinkle those throughout the calendar, and just to be honest, those were all changed, I'm afraid, throughout the year. So, uh, uh, we may have some more calendar revisions for you, uh, as we know what goes on sometime with our state and with our school system status that you probably continue to change, and this is, um, this month's change to the school calendar. Remote learning, uh, right now, we try to make a minimum of one thousand and twenty-five hours, it's, uh, per state mandate, but the remote learning days have to be days and not counted in hours. So our calendar now is a combination of hours and now days. If it wasn't, could use enough to start with, we now, uh, would come over the whole calendar.
So do those days, remote learning, have to be six hours?
Yeah, they have to be four, four days, which they, they have been based on what we do currently, so. So no workdays for teachers, or teachers will be off, so, you know, so very good, I guess, that's sort of a stat.
Can I vote on this? Do I have a motion to approve the, uh, school, two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school calendar revision? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Personnel, Ms. Knight?
Yes, during closed session, I will bring in the names, uh, for vacancies, uh, for a band director, there's a district-wide position, a CTE teacher, which is, um, career technical education, which is a high school position, business position, a high school math teacher position, a couple of teacher assistant positions, and then, uh, staff positions for jumpstart. Jumpstart is a North Carolina, uh, mandated program where we have the opportunity to bring in, or could locally teach, um, children in kindergarten to fourth grade that have some, have known learning gaps, and you can give them the invitation to come in and, uh, try to decrease that gap. And our plan was, and then again, it will continue to evolve, the plan was the last two weeks of July to begin that, so it was very possible that, um, that might begin locally. But it's just a chance to give them what it says, a jumpstart on the next year, and try to work on some of their deficits that we never may have. And then the staff that we will, that was our staff, they just didn't accomplish, none of the other stuff.
Ms. Davis, board policies.
Yes, sir. You have an attachment to the agenda that has first reading, and it says six policies. Remember, we went over those policies in, um, board training on June second. So they're, uh, on for first reading. And if you'll note the asterisks at the bottom, these policies were reviewed in board training on June second. Pursuant to your policy twenty-four twenty, adoption of policies, temporary approval by the board to meet emergency conditions or special events can take place before a subsequent meeting. You know, you can never do, part of your policy is two meetings on each policy. So, um, my recommendation is there are all emergency policies, having to do with COVID-nineteen, changes within the policies. If you would go ahead and, um, adopt them, a temporary approval, then we'll put them for next month. If you go over and you need to.
So we, we need to vote on this?
To approve those, a temporary approval pursuant to your policy twenty-four twenty, and then look at it again next month. And I'm sure there's gonna probably be some more emergency policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Do I have a motion to approve the temporary approval of the, uh, board policies as presented by Ms. Knight, I mean, Ms. Davis, sorry? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eight seven eleven A, three, and one forty-three, three eighteen eleven C, I move that the Grand County Board of Education, during the closed session, receive advice from M. Ellen Davis, attorney for the Grand County Board of Education. attorney for the Grand County Board of Education, which advice comes within the purview of the attorney-client privilege. The advice will be general legal advice about legal issues or legal matters. Pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven C, I move that the Grand County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of considering personnel matters as defined him and allowed by North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A, six, and North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C, three twenty.
Do I have a second? All in favor? All opposed? We are now in closed session. Session. Ms. Knight, action items?
Yes, I have some personnel recommendations. I recommend that you employ Megan Williams in the position of CTE teacher at the high school.
Do I vote on individuals? Do I have a motion to approve Megan Williams as the CTE teacher at the high school?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you employ Kobe White as a high school math teacher.
Do I have a motion to employ Kobe White as a high school math teacher? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you employ Michelle Phillips as the band director.
Do I have a motion to employ Michelle Phillips as a band director, high school and elementary and middle school?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you employ Madison Bellinger and Brooke Bailey in the positions of teacher assistants.
Do I have a motion to approve Madison Bellinger and Brooke Bailey as assistant teachers at the elementary school? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed?
And I recommend that you approve the elementary Jump Start staff as listed. And so we obviously do that list, but I can go over my notes. Kristy Greaves, Crystal McKinnon, Nikki Birchfield, Farrah Orr, Laura Beasley for CTA cable, Teresa Ludi, Lacey Orr, Connie Phillips, Shannon Dooley, Shelley Ratler, Linda Cross, Kayla Eismauer, and Kyla Stewart.
And those all were present in full, correct? Do I have, do I have a motion to approve the summer Jump Start people that Ms. Knight has just mentioned?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Is there any other business?
We have two announcements the next board meeting. Will be a special called board meeting on July fourteenth at eight AM primarily for the purpose of personnel. The second announcement we have is there will be a liberty graduation ceremony using precautionary measures on July eighteenth. Myself and the high school administration will be announcing that to students this evening and have been written directions and guidelines out soon.
Yes, sir. Birthday boy? Yes, that's me. How old are you? Seventy-five. What up? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear mom. Even though you're a volunteer man.
The first time I ever sang.
That's right. That's not a very impressive singing. Would you like us to do it again with more spirit? Okay.
That was kind of a bit.
Well, more time. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor? We are adjourned.